I'm Councilor Perillo, the Chairman of the Committee. On the committee with me is Councilor Papalato, Councilor Campbell, Councilor DeMers, and Councilor Toro.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Three items on the agenda for tonight. The first is a petition for a 2024 renewal of a second-class motor vehicle sales license for Woburn Glass, 243 Main Street. Mr. Secretary Perillo is here with us, and just as a precursor, Duno Oversack, he neglected to file the 2024 renewal. Contrite here to fix that, and then we'll file the 2025 renewal forthwith after that, moving forward to next year.
Mr. President, I have no objection with sending the petition out to pass, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is petition for a 2025 renewal of a first-class motor vehicle sales license for M&amp;L Transit Systems, CP Olympia Avenue, longtime member of Woburn community. All of the paperwork is in order, no citizen complaints, all entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion that we send out the petition for renewal out to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And last on the agenda tonight is petitions for a 2025 renewal of a second-class motor vehicle sales license by the following: David Delarocco doing business as Woburn Auto Sales, 5 Press Nav, and Thomas Keen doing business as Woburn Classic Auto Sales, 13 Fowl Street. Both longtime businesspeople in the city of Woburn, no issues with their applications, and everything's in order.
Make a motion that petitions be sent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
No complaints in all the paper.
Public safety, all in.
You gotta write something. You gotta write something.
I'm glad you brought it up this time.
There are none of these documents that need to be accepted along with this. We have the full documents for everybody. I was hanging on.
Are these ones I got you? Did you even?
So this is from your email. It's a copy of the conditions. It's a copy of the email from Attorney Armstrong.
From the latest.
Yes, please.
Okay.
But I need to keep the originals.
So why don't you take those, so I don't take them on?
Right. Yeah. I think everything.
The only tree that cashed shade on that Fleming field at the point was the guy hiding.
I'm gonna hand you those to Councilor Viola. We're gonna make a motion when we get to that. And you may copy these.
I have copies for everybody.
Oh, well, can I just have that? I promise I'll get back to you with everything. Okay, so, anyone see if we open this and take anything out, tell me not to. I'm gonna make the motion, we open up special permits. I'm the Chairman, Councilor Mercer Bruin, Ward five. Councilor Campbell will not be joining us tonight. We have Councilor Viola, Councilor Demambro, and Councilor DeMers also on the committee.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the September 23rd minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Bruin, I am not a member of the special permits, but I am gonna rescue myself from this particular matter.
Okay.
Leave them all.
All right, thank you, President Dillon. Okay, so the first matter on our agenda tonight is SDA properties at 56 Dragon Court for a special permit under Section 7.3 and Section 5.1 of the WZO to allow for the extension or alteration of a pre-existing non-com逞 use at the premises and accessory overnight parking at 56 Dragon Court. So I'm just gonna set the table a little bit and bring everybody, oh, sorry.
I can make a motion to accept the documents that we received tonight, make them part of the permanent record.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And if we can just make sure everybody gets a copy?
Yep, it was passed.
And if there are any extras? Do we have an extra one of the email that was sent from Attorney Armstrong? Is that with it?
They mixed them.
These are the, oh, these are the original? Just wanna make sure I can give it to anybody in the audience who wants.
The originals still down there, girl?
Oh, here they are, right? So if there's anybody in the audience who wants a copy, I'll pass those out, and here you go. So anybody, would you like a copy?
You have the original versions?
You took it, I thought you took everything.
Uh, no, I just left them right in here.
No, I didn't take anything out of here. Did not take, I did not, I just referred to it for the notes. Okay, so, I'm gonna just bring everybody up to speed on where we were and where we are today. So we had one special permit meeting to talk about this, the overnight parking of the vehicles at 56 Dragon, and got a little bit into what the business entailed. Then we had a special permits meeting not too long ago, where we talked about a bunch of potential conditions. Following that, the attorney and the business owner met with myself and Counselor DeMambro at the site a week ago tonight around 5:30-ish. So we walked the site, we looked at a variety of different things, talked about a variety of different conditions. The petitioner never saw in writing the conditions that night, but we did go over most of them, including hours of operation. We looked at the parking, there was a conversation about the parking and that the plot plan said we had, there were 24 spaces. Lou actually took the time to walk around all the sides of the building and measure out potential parking. We fell on 17, it looked like that could work. You know, that will be, remain to be seen until the actual survey plan is put together. So that's where we are tonight, and then around 3:00 or 4:00 today, we got an email from the petitioner saying that they feel that hours of operation are not necessary, and don't feel they should be constrained by that along with some other things. So you have a copy of the conditions that were originally proposed, you have the email from the petitioner, and I wanna remind everybody that this petition was filed under 7.3 and 5.6, 5.1. Legally, we have to find that this petition is the same or of less impact to the neighborhood. And that means the business that was there before, not the surrounding businesses, the business that was there before. Just so everybody understands the guidelines which were working. Also, I wanna remind everybody that this street and where it's located is very similar to a few other streets we have in the city. Salem Street, for instance, we have issued a couple of permits over in Salem Street for overnight parking that have exact similar conditions because they back right up to a neighborhood. Raper Street and Nashua, you literally have to drive through the neighbors to get to the industrial park, which absolutely mirrors what's happening here. So things are a little, you know, we're looking at a very unique situation in how we talk about Dragon Court, so I want everyone to keep that in mind as we move forward. So I'm gonna invite the petitioner up to talk about their concerns and their proposed conditions. Then if the council or if the committee sees fit, we can open it up to anyone else who wants to speak. And then I'm going to help us clear the table, and we shall deliberate. Not clear the room, clear the table. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Attorney Armstrong, you have the floor. You're welcome.
Carrie Armstrong for the petitioner, Sean Armstrong, who is sitting with me, the owner of Creative AV. On the parking, just very quickly, we haven't had the survey done yet. Figured we would know when exactly we need to show.
Yeah.
But I did draw out the sketch and tried to blow it up a little bit, so if that's helpful for part of the conversation at all.
Perfect, thank you, I'm gonna pass these down, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I just had a few copies, you can just pass them.
And understood that you don't, I mean, that takes time.
Yeah, and we need to know what final things need to be done, so we did hold off on doing, you know, that survey.
Yeah, yeah, no worries.
Sean wanted to say a few words, if that's okay.
Of course, he's the owner, potential owner.
Sean Armstrong, the owner of Creative AV. I just wanted to bring it to the board of attention, I appreciate everybody's help with this matter. I've owned and operated my own business since 2005 out of my house in Malden, where I currently have three tenants, one including my elderly parents, as well as I have direct neighbors, three family house touching my property line, that see us every day. And in the last 20 years, we have not ever had one incident or one complaint. We are very respectful of our neighbors and the surround the community. That's all I really wanted to say.
I appreciate that, I'm sure the committee appreciates that as well. So, in terms of the conditions, I'd like to go through one by one what was proposed. And I know you have concerns about the hours of operation, but I will say this. There are no, very few premises in the city that we issue, never mind one that goes through a neighborhood where we don't have hours of operation. So, as far as I'm concerned, that's a non-starter. But I will say this, if the council is amenable to talking about maybe extending the hours to 7:00 PM, I would be open to that. But I also wanna remind the council that we have to remember what the previous hours were at the other business, were required by law to know that this is not more impactful. And again, I've said to both of you, I don't think this is going to be a big impact on the neighborhood. If I thought that, we wouldn't even be having this conversation about conditions. I don't, I don't believe that. But I do believe that in the other instances in this city, for as long as I have been doing this, when you have a situation where you have to drive through a neighborhood, we do have these conditions. So, having said that, the hours of operation are currently proposed 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturdays, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. When we talked about those conditions when we met on site, there weren't any concerns, but there were, just so the council knows, a few hours later, I did get an email from the petitioner saying, we thought about it, that's not gonna work. We like hours from 5:30 AM, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but I think it was in the email, it was 5:00, we wanted 5:30 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, and then some administrative hours on Sunday, that's what your email said. As a matter of fact, I asked for a copy of that to be put in here. And, and I responded that, because the previous hours for the engraved, engraved business that was there, those hours, and I confirm that, you guys actually did the Googling that night to find out what those hours were. Monday through Thursday, from 5:30 AM to 3:30 PM, and there were no hours of operation for Thursday, Friday, so, sorry, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So having said that, when we had that information with the back and forth, I said, I'm gonna submit the hours as they are, and we will deliberate. So here we are to do that. So, the second condition is about the vans. I don't know if you noticed, but there were some changes in the language that I did say that they could be similar in size, shape, or weight. So is that condition not something that you're comfortable with anymore?
So, the, there's sort of an overreaching, and I don't know if everyone got a chance to read the email. I realize it was, it was sent at the end of the day. But there's sort of a larger context that we're trying to look at all of these within that context being that you can set hours of operation, but it's not the type of business that opens and closes at a certain time. It's not like a store where you open the door at 9:00, let people in and out, you close the door at 5:00 and you lock it. There are mornings where people need to leave early, there are days where jobs run late, you have no control over what happens on a job site. What we don't want to risk doing is, for both of our stakes, being locked into certain hours that just may not be possible for us to keep, for the business to keep all of the time. You know, it wouldn't be responsible to say, yes, we can agree to 6:00 every night, but we're, we may have guys who are coming in off a job at 7:00, or they were on a ferry and they come in at 8, 9:00, and need to swap out a van at that point. That's just the reality of the way that the business operate on a, on a day-to-day basis. Similar thing of having hours where if you have someone who's coming in, a customer who's coming in to have a speaker demonstrated or some shades demonstrated, they're gonna wanna come after they get out of work. They're gonna wanna come on a weekend. So we have some concerns about not being able to accommodate the clients the way that we need to accommodate them, both on a day-to-day basis. So that's where, that's where that one is coming from, sort of on the hours of. We can't promise that every single day, every single truck is gonna be parked at 6:00, and everybody's gonna disappear off the property. A lot of what happens is gonna happen inside of the building. Speakers are gonna be demonstrated inside of the building. The trucks, yes, will be loaded and unloaded, but office work to be done inside the building. To have zero Sunday hours is not reasonable when you have the owner of the business who's also the person who's doing all the invoicing, who maybe wants to go in and catch up on stuff.
The owner of the business, just for clarification, it's your building, you can go into it anytime you want, anytime you want.
That's not what this looks like, though.
So we can clarify that, but, um, I'm gonna open it up to the committee, but just to clear that up, as the owner of the business, you can go into that building anytime you want, you can dance, you can sing, you can do whatever you want. If you choose to do paperwork until 2:00 in the morning, have at it. What you cannot do is you can't have your operation, you can't have administrative staff in that office. You could go, you got you on the building too, right? So I just wanted to clarify that. I'm gonna open it up to the committee in regards to the, so let's take it one at a time, in regards to the office hours, or the hours of operation. Is there anybody that has any questions? Counselor DeMers, and then Counselor DeMambro.
As Chairwoman Mercer Bruin stated, I think it's reasonable to get to some compromise here in terms of the hours of operation, where it creates maybe even flexible windows of where the trucks will be just arriving. You know, in the morning, I know you're probably not leaving your equipment in these cars, in your vans packed overnight, due to the value there. So I think, I think maybe we could look at possibly, you know, different types of windows where that can occur, where the trucks can arrive, and then the general operation of your business occurs under the general operating hours, as opposed to just no delineated operating hours at all in the special permit. It's very uncommon not to have, not to have within the, within the special permit, the hours of operation. So I think, you know, if we could find, I think what was shocking to me when I saw the revised, revised proposed conditions was that it was just, you know, completely taken out and not a request for, like, a compromise timeframe. And I understand the flexibility may need to be there, but I think what, what we have to do is there's a balance between the residents on that street and the small businesses on that street. And, and anybody will ask you, this has been a very pro-small-business council, okay? We're willing to work with you, we just wanna, we, we need to, like, work and try to, try to find some compromise hours or language that protects everybody involved, because I, I understand what you're coming from, where, you know, if a truck arrives after your hours of operation, you don't want that to be a trigger for a special permit review. Totally understand. But if we can work on it, maybe do some language, maybe do different flexible hours within that, I think we can come to a resolution.
Right, and I, I'm not looking for like 24/7, like, like that type of thing, but, you know, I also don't wanna be limited, and I don't wanna be coming before the board, I don't want somebody calling all the time either. It's just, you know, to be honest with you, I'm spending 1.4 million dollars of my hard-earned money, and, you know, to have a lot of restrictions, like, every time we've turned around with the council, we've gotten an email about changes or add-ons and this and that, it gets a little frustrating, to be honest with you. It's not like we're gonna be running a showroom all the time, like a store, coming in. If I told you over the past year, if I've had five or six clients come into my, my showroom, like, I don't deal with those type of clients. I deal with high-end clients that I go to their houses, they do what I tell them. This is just more of, I don't wanna say, okay, come to my showroom at 7:00 at night, like, most of the people work till 5, 6:00 at night, and then they'll come in between 6:00 and 8, or 6:00 and 9, you know, and it's inside. You know, it's one person coming in, not a group of people, not 20 people at a time, like a store or anything like that. I, I just want that to be clear, too. And I agree with you, so like, my guys, for instance, the other night, we were talking, and we were talking about the hours being 7:00 to 6:00 when we were on site. Well, that night, my guys got back at 7:30 at night, and they had us start the next morning at 6:50. You know, we're very fluent, we're always changing, and to be honest with you, we change every night. So usually, I can honestly say the earliest that any of my guys have ever started has been like 5:30 if we had to go down to Nantucket, or 6:00, but most of the time, they come in between 6:30 and 7:00. And for the most part, my guys are back anywhere between 5:00 and 6:00, for the most part. You know, occasionally, jobs get late, an island job, a ton like that, we come back at 7:00. So I, as far as the restrictions on the trucks and all that stuff, I think we can work with something. It should have those hours of me and my secretary coming into the office, you know, on a Saturday night or a Sunday, like, trying to, like, get those, I don't have a huge company.
I think, I think our primary concern is based around when the vans are gonna be coming going?
Yep.
And when people are gonna be coming going that you're selling product to. I find that as the operation of your business.
Okay.
I don't think you, I don't think you and an administrative staff person doing paperwork would impact the neighbors as much as if we extended the hours, and then that constant back and forth with the vans, your equipment being in and out, and then folks coming into your showroom. And granted, if you're gonna be an expanding business, you're probably gonna be reaching a lot more people that may actually wanna go see that. So I just, I, I hope that some sort of compromise can be reached with that. If there's, you know, additional provisions we can put in there that would, you know, when the, when the trucks would be coming going, and then a window that after-hours could be used for showings. I mean, I'm, I would be open to support that, I don't know what Counselor Mercer Bruin would be willing to, but I, I just think there's a middle there that we can get to.
I'm, I'm hoping there's something we can get to, but I have, I wanna respond to some of the things I've heard, but I'm gonna defer to the rest of the committee, and then I'll, then I'll do that. I think Counselor DeMambro.
Hi, folks. So, when we went out on the site, we found 17 parking spots. It's tight, it is what it is. But, you know, my, one of my concerns was the loading dock, you know, leave that open so you can safely, you know, drive some sort of a vehicle in there, box truck, whatever, however you guys get your deliveries. As for the hour of operation, I understand this. I mean, I live 210 School Street, it's no kept secret. I got an industrial park in my backyard. I hear it, I see it, I smell it, all day, every day. I understand residents' concerns with traffic noise, so on and so forth. I have different animals in my backyard, though. They're much larger, they're, they're bigger, they're bolder, they make a hell of a lot more noise than a couple of, you know, cargo vans. But I do think that, you know, Sunday operations, the residents need a break. Saturday evenings, residents need a break. You being the owner, we all, in agreement, I think all of us agree, you go come and go, if you please, we, we would have no problem with that. I would think that maybe, and I, and I mentioned this to my Counselor Bruin earlier, if there's a onesie, twosie, you know, job where you have to be in Martha's Vineyard, and you gotta catch a ferry, and you gotta leave at 4:00 in the morning or whatever, you know, is it a possibility of having your employees take the van home?
Oh, absolutely.
Or if they should come home at 9, 10:00 at night, they're dog-dead tired anyway. They probably just wanna go home and grab a hot meal or a sandwich and just go to bed. Would that be an option that you would be agreeable upon?
100%, but that leads us to one of the next, about the parking situation, we actually put that in there because of that reason. That's exactly what happened, so like, my guys called me tonight.
If there was a car or vehicle left there overnight, say whatever, a Toyota or Subaru, people are gonna say, well, what's going on there? You car dealership?
Yeah.
I get it, but I think it's, it's, it's a fair compromise, you know, to not only the business owner, but your employees to, to enable that, because it's better for them.
They do it all the time.
All the way around, providing you can provide enough security and locks on your vehicles that nothing goes missing in the middle of the night. That was something that I had discussed with Chairwoman Counselor Bruin. Other than that, I mean, I'm in agreeable with most of everything that's here, and I, and I'm hoping we can come to some sort of a resolution to this and get you guys going.
For clarification, Counselor, when you say everything that's here, you mean the conditions as they were put forth by me, or the conditions that were put forth this evening?
The conditions that are, are on both sides, I think we can combine them, and we can kinda tweak them a little and make it work.
And as Chairman, I'm gonna ask for clarification on your question about taking the vans home, because if that were the case, that would negate the reason, the, any, any issue with the current hours of operation. We, we could leave the hours of operation as they are, if, if they run into those emergency situations.
Well, on a seven.
That would negate, negate the issue, correct?
If it went to a 7:00 PM, and, and like the petitioner had said, if they have customers that have to come in after work, after work hours, and they wanna test a product or whatever, listen or hear or see, I could see 7:00, but I think that's a fair number.
Right, okay, so for the record, I'm gonna say I'm open to that discussion, I brought that up earlier. So Counselor, I'm, sorry, Counsel, I'm having a day. Counselor Viola, please, you have the floor, and I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm in agreeance both with Counselor DeMers and Counselor DeMambro that I do think that there's some, some, some agreement that we can come to tonight. I do agree that there has to be a set hours of operation, as with every other special permit that I've sat in front of, there's always been hours of operations. Where you did bring up that you're amenable to letting vehicles go home, which I think that would be a good idea if they're gonna be out late, just so they can leave their vehicle.
They have a place to park.
Yep.
Yeah, they, they, and to be honest with you, like, my guy called me today, he goes, all right, if I take the van home, I'm 20 minutes from my house? I go, yeah, go right ahead, because we don't have a parking issue. We had a parking issue where they were being told only our vans. If we can accommodate to my employee vehicles, then yes, you know, I'd take them home two, three nights a week, and they wouldn't be back. And I'm open to the hours of, you know, operation, I can, you know, I'm sure we can come to and bring them. As long, like she said, I can go in whenever I need, that's where I would.
Yeah, you're on the building.
I was thinking back, then, you know, I'd wanna be able to go in there and do what I need.
Yeah, no, you'd be able to.
Sure. That's, is that?
That's all I have for now.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring up the, so, yeah, so their vehicles would be there overnight, okay? So the permit is for the vans, so we just have to make sure, I mean, this isn't gonna happen all the time, right? This is like an outlier thing, because it's the vans that will be registered in the city of Woburn.
All the van, all the van, all my company vehicles that will be parked there will be registered in the city. It's gonna save me an insurance, I wanna park. But, you know, I can honestly say two to three times a week that one, one of my guys takes his van home and leaves his truck there, and will, will leave his truck there. We can come up with a parking pass or something that gets his vehicle when it's there, or something like that. But realistically, I only have one or two guys that would take a van home.
I mean, I think this solves the problem of extending those hours or not having hours, because that was certainly, I don't think, on the table. But I, I just wanna think it out and make sure, because it's for the parking of the van. So, so we just have to make sure that we have language that is legal and amenable based on what you have applied for. So, so I think we're getting closer. So let's leave hours of operation, but I did wanna just make one quick comment about what you folks said earlier about how, you know, the conditions keep changing. We had one meeting on, in the public hearing, which, you know, it was, you know, very brief, it was very brief. And then we had a special permits meeting where we heard a little bit more about your business, but it was still not as much as we heard, like, the next time. So, so as, if you, if you think that, you know, we keep throwing these conditions, I, I just have to say, the conditions are based on the information as we're receiving it, that, that's all. So, let's, let's go to, oh, yes, Counselor Viola.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to let other members speak.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Toro.
Thank you. Penny Armstrong, so, before we move on from the hours, I think it's well-established here that the council members want to establish some sort of hours, similar to that of previous special permits. I'd love to hear from you, with that being said, I'd love to hear from you on how you think it would be amenable for the business to address those clients that you mentioned would come in after hours, you know what I mean, those 7:00 timeframes, those, you know. It seems like it doesn't happen very often, but again, my first thought before we started going into. But again, my first thought before we started going into this, would it be appropriate to have primary hours of operation? Here's the primary hours of operation that the business generally operates out of, but gives a little bit of flexibility for when you have those instances. Of that client that comes in, into the building at seven o'clock to see a, a demonstration. Again, I don't think we've asked outside of just removing the condition of no hours. I think we've heard from you as to what would be maybe beneficial or amenable to the business to address that concern.
So like how I are, like, I look at two different sides of this. My, my team and then my customers. So I can tell you that my guys generally start at seven in the morning and they come in a little earlier. And they're generally done by, between the hours of four and six, seven, six thirty, maybe seven the latest. My clients would, I honestly would say I could see them coming in between the hours of four and eight in the afternoon. Generally speaking. Uh, eight being a stretch if they, you know, coming from out of Boston to get there six, six thirty and we're there till eight o'clock, not walking in the door. But I, I think if we could set some sort of parameter of, you know, till seven or eight at night or seven and, you know. If they're there, you know, we're just inside type.
Does the.
Terminology or something?
Does the Saturday take care of that, uh, Sean, eight, eight to four on Saturday?
Well, I just put that in there because, uh, well, that was kinda the fact of me working. Generally speaking, my team did not work Saturday.
No, I don't mean your team. I mean your customers because what you said, there's two different things and that's clear. Yeah.
Right, right. Um, yes, that would help, help alleviate some of that, but then again, I don't always work weekends. So like, you know. I was going on the, it, impression of me going in there on a Saturday being like eight to four and not having somebody call. So as far as me being open every Saturday, that's not gonna be happening. You know, I'm not there every Saturday. I just thought, wanted to make sure that I wasn't gonna, if I had somebody come in on a Saturday, it wouldn't be a problem.
Right, right.
That, that's more like, more in line, uh, uh, my day of operations for my team and people coming in is usually Monday through Friday. And then Sa- Saturdays, Sundays is more me and my administrative staff doing other things.
Counselor Toro, do you have any other questions?
I still don't think there was a real, a real response on, outside of, well, actually, maybe you did. Is it to extend, is, what you're saying is the best way to do that would be to extend your hours that are listed here to eight P M. To allow for that to happen? Or is that what you're saying?
That's what I, I, I would, yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, may I just throw something out?
Yes, thank you, Counselor.
So I think where I was trying to get at, I didn't do a great job of explaining that would be, you'd have your general hours of operation.
Yep.
And then you have, say, showroom hours. Where it would be client, that we would limit the amount of time that clients would be coming and going.
Okay.
Okay, so if it would be, you know, seven to seven operating hours and then four to, four to eight showroom. Is that, is that something that is amenable? I, I know, I'm just throwing it out there, see what sticks because we don't wanna really, I mean, we've, we've, we've talked a lot about this.
Right. I, I, I would go six to seven. Uh, you know, not seven to seven just because of the morning hours of my guys coming in early, you know, just to.
Six A M.
Six A M to seven.
Uh, I thought this had to do with your customers. I'm sorry.
Well, we're talking now about.
Yeah, so general, what, what you're proposing, Counselor.
We don't want clients coming and going all the time.
Yeah, so two different sets of hours, right? So the general operating hours.
So it's a general operating and within that, it's limiting the showroom hours.
You're proposing.
The general public could be in and out of there.
Possible showroom hours, but I, I also wanna caution the council that part of our legal responsibility is to. Find that this is less detrimental. So I wanna remind you of the hours that were there before, one more time. Five thirty to three thirty, Monday through Thursday. So if this conversation is gonna continue about four to eight, I will caution you that it shouldn't be every day. That I'm willing to listen to something that is, um, you know. Not every day, what, what is it? We, then we need to have some guidelines here. If we're going to do what we're legally required to do. Counselor Demambro, one more second, Sean, sorry.
What, what, what if, being you said you don't work every Saturday, it almost sounds like there's the window. That Saturday, that eight to four, there's your, there's your showtime where you can show. People don't have to rush home from work, uh, to go in and, and look at a piece of equipment or look at a layout. That they may only have forty-five minutes to do because with tick tock, tick tock, we're coming up on the six or seven o'clock hour. What if you would just, uh, remend the, the Saturday hours, eight to four, by which you possibly go in and do your paperwork? Or you do paperwork and you know at ten o'clock A M., your client's coming in to do, you know, a sound check or whatever, or take a look at whatever. And that is your showroom hour, um, or, or day of show. And as for during the week, again, if you were to have to pick up a ferry and you had to leave at four in the morning, the guy takes the van home that night. And maybe we put a clause in there that says overnight parking for vans, company vans or employee vehicle only.
It's gonna stop you right there. We can't do that. This was advertised as five vans. So we have to stick with what this was advertised as. That doesn't mean that, you know, where, if there's an emergency situation where your guys need to do that. You can do that. I, I would imagine it's not gonna be a regular thing. But if, if we're gonna do that, I think we probably need to talk to Lindsay and re-advertise this thing. So I'm not saying I'm not amenable to it, but we have a responsibility to do what was advertised, right?
I, I understand that and you keep saying about the five thirty to three, so if we were to come in.
Three thirty.
Three thirty. I think my team coming in at five thirty in the morning is gonna be more, more of a problem. Than them coming in at, at six to six or six to seven. You know, they're gonna be coming in at five thirty in the morning, you know? If that's the case, then I would have people coming in at five thirty in the morning. That's, you know, I'm trying to, you know, be generous, you know, not generous, but. Considerate of, of the neighborhood too. But, you know, when I drove through there and we were there, our neighbors. Not, not neighbors, but the, um, businesses in that area still had vehicles there at eight, nine o'clock at night. Still operating their businesses. And I understand it's not their permit, it's not their, but we're surrounded by industrial buildings. You cannot see a house from this building.
I'm gonna stop you right there, Sean, okay? So first of all, there is no overnight parking of vehicles anywhere near, near you guys. Not one special permit. Nope, people can be, they, they might have their vehicles there. They cannot park them overnight. So there is one special permit that's issued. There are special permits that are issued down further, not near Drayton. I did a lot of research on this before we even came here. Now, I understand that the residents, they can't see you. They can't. But that's not what this is about.
Okay.
You still have to, the vehicles are coming and going. And, and I, and I know some people will say, well, this is not a big deal. Well, some of the people that are concerned about this, I want everyone to remember. That they have roots in this city and also we should be listening to their concerns. Mister Owen lives in the house where he grew up, just like you do, just like I do, just like Council President Dylan. So, so their concerns are our concerns. And when we have these situations, when you're driving through an industrial park to drive through and, uh, past people's neighborhoods. That's why this makes it so special. And I understand you, you said you're gonna be a good neighbor and I hope you are. But that's why these conversations are so important, Sean, and I, and I hope you appreciate that.
I do, but why did you, then, then A, why did you guys put an industrial park through that neighborhood? Or why did you build neighbor, houses in that?
I can't answer that question because it happened when I was in high school. So I can't answer that question. I, I don't know why it was done on Draper Street. I don't know why it was done on other streets in this city back in the early seventies. I have no idea. That's why these things are now by special permit. So I'm really hoping we can come up with some kind of compromise, um, to help your business fit in that location. That's all I'm saying. So I'm gonna go back to the original question.
Sure. To one thing.
Yeah, sure, sure.
We have appreciation for the neighbors.
I know you do.
Who have roots.
Yeah.
And we understand that they're constituent. We do not live in Woburn. We're trying to put our business into.
And we want you to.
Um, let me just get through my whole thoughts so I don't lose track.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
We're trying to put our business into Woburn and establish roots here and become a business that becomes part of this community. But there is also the other side of it where the seller that we're potentially buying from is also a constituent. And also has some significant roots. They've been in that location for decades at this point. And I, I feel like maybe their side's not being looked at because now it's becoming very difficult for them to go ahead with the sale of their business. If it's not, we're one foot out the door right now. I've been very clear with you about that. I, I, I don't think it's a secret to anybody who's watched these proceedings that. We are really having second thoughts about whether we want to be in this spot. Maybe this isn't the right. Whether it's Woburn or not Woburn, maybe this just isn't the right spot in Woburn.
That could be.
But who's gonna come after us? I think you're gonna be hard pressed to find a less intense user. Than this potential user going into that spot. Now, what that looks like as far as someone's willing to put in money for rezoning or this, that and the other thing, I don't know what that's gonna look like. That's, that's not gonna, yes, we're not gonna go that far. Um, I don't believe we're willing to go that far, but, but that's a reality too, that this is the, very much I do think is, is a use that can fit. And I think I've heard several counselors say that. Over the various hearings, so, um, you know, to. To say that only one side of roots, it sounds like one side of roots matter more than the other right now. Um, you know, in this, this building, this business is also part of that neighborhood and part of that area and deserves to have its side heard in.
And we have done that.
In the, in this neighborhood.
And we, and we have done that. Um, so we have talked about the hours of operation. You've made a, um, a, a reference to four to eight, Counselor Demambro, I mean, Counselor Demers. Uh, does anybody else have anything to say?
I just wanna clarify one point too. I think, you know, the thing that struck me was that you just Xed out the hours of operations altogether. Rather than out, offering a counter proposal that would fit your business, which you have much more knowledge about what would be coming. Because I think you understand where there has to be some sort of. That's delineated.
But, but to, my thought.
To X it out only a few hours ago before the, before the committee hearing without offering some sort of compromise language, knowing that. The ward counselors that toured your property mentioned hours of operation. I mean, we're trying to work with you.
My fit, my, but my, like, the reason for those, that was, was my thought was, what she was proposing was what I could do.
So then let's, let's back up.
Yeah.
So.
In Counselor Mercer Bruin's original proposal. Would you agree to those hours? In terms of your hours of operation?
Yeah, I think we were just kicking this all around and then it was confusion as to just one thing in terms of whether the principal owner of the. How do they address the customers that come in at night? We can put additional language in that, but not just striking out altogether, limiting the showroom.
You wanna offer up some language, Counselor Demers?
Alright. Well, I, I, I would like to say if. Just for my daily operation, I need six to seven. To be honest with you, like, and I, and if I go over a little bit here and there, then that's so be it.
So if we did six to seven and then you had four to seven as your showroom hours, would that work? Four P M to seven.
So I can't have people in at two o'clock? I, I'm just talking about like the showroom extended hour, maybe like eight o'clock P M. That's what I'm, I'm gonna be able to have people come in during the day too. It, 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 to be honest with you, so if I can't even do that and if we can't agree on those types of hours, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not gonna buy the bill. That's simple because it's, it's not, I, you know, I'm running a business.
It has to be feasible. We can't have somebody who says, oh, I have the afternoon off. I can come at two and say, sorry, you have until four or five or six. If we're open during the day, anyone should be able to come and go. And that's, that's where some of these other crossouts is, I don't know how far down this list we're gonna get to is, is we're feeling a little bit of an, an overreach on controlling how the business is run. And who can come and go from the business at what times? You own the business, you open the business, you're open to the public and you can do your business the way you need to do it.
And it's just because this is a special permit. This was, if this was any, any other part of the business, like in Woburn, I could operate hours. Cause there's a lot of businesses that operate till, you know, eight, nine o'clock at night. But that's without the special permit.
There's, there's more to that than, but, uh, uh, Counselor.
Can I, two, two questions?
Sure.
Can I show you the magnitude of the impact? You said you have seven or eight times a year people go look at a, this is a small.
Well, that's not what I've heard. I had three ti- I heard a lot of different things. I heard three times a week, I heard four times.
This isn't like Best Buy. There's gonna be a sale on stereos and a hundred.
It's not that, this is a customer coming in.
The last, the last time we were here at committee meeting, I think I mentioned this. These customers now who are coming for demonstrations are coming to my home. They're walking into my house.
So how many times a week does this happen?
Not a week.
Okay.
It's not even a week.
So that's what I wanted to focus, roll it back into that.
It's occasional, but we never can predict when it's going to be. I don't know if it's gonna be once a month. Um, I'm trying to think back of. There are maybe three or four I can think of over this past year.
So that's.
But again, this is seventy, eight o'clock at night. They come to my home and.
When they show up, it's, uh, either a husband or wife or it's a, if it's a, a bigger venue, it's, it's a technical guy and owner of a building. Two people or three people come in a car and they stay and they look at the speaker system and you play it in the building and then they leave. And the building that you currently play it in is your home.
Yes.
Okay. That, I just.
And, and, it, it, you know, I'm just trying to cover myself so as we grow. But I could see like, I don't even see this being a, a weekly thing. You know, if, 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 if at most I could see it being two to three people a week, if at most, you know? And I'm not, you know, but I just also don't wanna put in word in that's gonna limit me to when they can actually come.
And I guess then the fear, cause I just wanna get, and I'm not a voting member. I don't vote on this tonight.
Yeah.
I won't, but the, what I wanna get my head around is that your fear is that at seven o'clock comes, you're gonna shut off the stereo and say, come back tomorrow night, cause it's seven o'clock.
Right.
We wanna avoid.
I just, I just don't wanna avoid anybody calling and complaining. I don't like complaints. I don't like trouble. I don't wanna.
But you can't hear this stuff. They wouldn't hear anything. All it sees is.
Somebody driving by looking to see who's there and what vehicle's parked there. I just wanted to try.
Counselor Demers, did you have language you wanted to offer up?
I mean, I'm torn, Counselor Mercer Bruin, because I wanna, you know, respect where you are coming from in terms of having set hours.
I won't.
Yeah, correct. And I mean, I think, and I know, you know, we're negotiating and the petitioner doesn't wanna. You know, show their hand too much if you wanna get certain hours. I understand that. But I mean, I just, I don't know. I mean, I'm torn here because I'd love, I'd love to, it, it seems like a very limited use, but. You know, I, I understand where Counselor Mercer Bruin's coming from because there could be, you know, there could be said that. Oh yeah, it's only, you know, we'll get, we'll get three amount, we'll get ten amount, we'll get, you know? If that's higher than that number, there's nothing within the special permit that protects. So I think what, I, I, there is a middle ground to have here. It's just people need to propose it. I, I don't feel comfortable proposing it because I would defer to Counselor Mercer Bruin on the language for, uh, for hours of operation because it's her ward.
Counselor Demambro.
Viola.
I'm sorry.
Oh my God.
That's all right.
Lou and I have spent a lot of time together last couple of weeks.
Not a problem. Um, I wouldn't feel comfortable supporting this without the hours of operation and then we're saying that you're. First saying that not many people are gonna come, then you're saying maybe two to three people a week. I mean, is it gonna be a weekly thing? Is it gonna be, I mean?
I've never owned a commercial property. I never had this type of thing.
Right. And then also where you're gonna plan on expanding in the future, is that gonna mean it's gonna be a nightly thing? If, I mean, with the Saturday hours, I feel as though the Saturday hours would justify being, being able, customers to come in to, to try out the equipment.
Counselor Papalado.
Um, I, I too, we, we want to make this work. You hear every, every member of this committee says the same thing. But in deference to the neighbors. Again, I feel like there has to be some time limit on that. So what is the time limit that you're comfortable with?
So we have written down a daily operations would be.
General.
Gen- general, general use would be six to seven P M. And Saturday, eight to four, eight to four.
So on Saturdays, I think you had said there's not daily operations happening. It's more you going in there with the secretary or whatever.
Exactly. Maybe have a client come in possibly if, if it's allowable, you know?
Okay.
But it's not a, a daily operation. Just that would be me and my o- office people going in, all my guys going and cleaning inside.
Okay, so it's six to seven during the week is what you're asking for and eight to four on Saturdays.
And eight to four. I understand the Sunday thing, but as long as I can go in there freely, do what I need to do, that, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with, I'm, I'm fine with those adjustments. If it's Monday through Friday, um, I, I will.
And the only, I, the only thing I would like to just have in there, I'm not saying it's gonna be, use all that, if I could have the extension just for the showroom, not my guy making noise outside. Just be able to have somebody in there until eight o'clock, not open or anything like that. Just, you know, be able to have somebody.
Okay, so six A M to seven P M. And then you want additional showroom hours? Okay, so six A M to seven P M and then you want additional showroom hours? I I was okay with six A M to seven P M if we're just talking about extending the hours. Uh, so now you're talking about. That and showroom hours, so I I mean, you gotta meet us halfway here.
That's fine.
I gotta be doing it every time.
If somebody's there at seven o'clock and, you know, we're there until seven thirty, somebody calls.
Think you're gonna ha- I don't think you're ha- gonna have that.
That's fine, that's fine then.
Um, but if you were there till eight or not, you know, and even that, you know, I I understand what your operation is. I'm just asking you to work with us. You've heard from this council, everybody wants to try to do that, and and we've already come a long way here, so. I'm gonna make or ask the council for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the general hours operation for Monday to Friday be from six A M to seven P M. And for Saturdays from eight A M to four P M. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Attorney, okay? Alright, so um, the next condition was the overnight parking of the vans, and I did make some changes here. To the language so that it says cargo vans or vehicles in similar size, shape, or weight. So you're okay with that? I know you proposed different language, but I think it gets us to the same place.
Well, it doesn't get us to the same place.
Well, I mean, you did say to the council, you're not gonna have box trucks and big trucks like that. Similar size, shape, and weight includes cargo vans or um.
Be worried about employee cars.
Yeah, that that that's what. What my, my main thing would be employee cars. Like if a, if a, if a van's not there, I'm okay with the language on the vans, like. We don't know when they're gonna be coming out next year with a different van, so we, that's not that we can decide. It, we, I'm okay with that, but the, having just my van there and not an employee's car there, we need to have that to be able to be done. And as, as they stated, if a guy's, you know.
No, I understand that.
You know, we work, you know.
And I think that's a great compromise, that you could take them home. Um, I just don't know what language we could use uh, in that regard, because the permit is for. The special permit for the vans, um, but again, we're talking about situations that aren't gonna happen on a regular basis, so I think we're okay. I don't know.
Can we say vehicle?
The special permit for commercial overnight parking, for the commercial vehicles.
Or five vehicles.
Let me go back and look at the.
Because that might be, that might be the jux of the compromise. If one commercial vehicle's gone, now they won't be able, there wouldn't be a. Clients with the registry.
The extension alteration, accessory overnight parking. So it's accessory overnight parking. It doesn't specify. Any, either or, so as long as I know the vans are, I think we know the vans are parked. And registered in the city of Woburn, and so I think we're good.
Five vehicles.
Yeah, so I think we're good. Um, so condition number, my condition number four.
Is that the permit application?
Oh, this is how it's um, this is how it was advertised.
So then we don't need to put in the vans at all, just to.
Right, it's just five.
Five accessory overnight parking.
But all the vans will be registered. Like I said, I wanna do that this.
Yeah, the kind, that's, just so you know, the council will, every time, no matter whether you're going through a neighborhood or not. Asking you what type of vehicles they are. And, you know, the weight and all that, that's pretty standard stuff around here, um.
And then you, you said, so you, you're, we can, so that's fine, we're okay with that.
Okay, number uh, four, oh, sorry.
Can you just re- I'm sorry, can you read it off?
Sure.
Wait, you, did you make any changes to that language? Cause based on this, we're talking accessory. Accessory overnight parking, but this doesn't even have the five, that's why, do we have the permit application?
I don't have the, I just.
Is it in the file?
That gray folder that you're not supposed to open?
Yeah, that we're not supposed to give away things. Yeah, I don't see it. But either way, Attorney Armstrong, the, we will have to describe them as as vans for now or similar. Cause that's. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I think if we put language in that would do a provision that would exempt if one van was out to be kept in employee's house overnight, that that employee's car. Conditionally, not permanently, but conditionally, could be allowed to be there overnight.
Do you wanna offer up some language?
I'll. Let's see, special permit is for overnight parking of five vans, and then on the section, so it would be, it would be condition number four. All overnight vehicles intended to be, well, yeah, all overnight vehicles. All overnight company vehicles. Intended to be parked overnight on a regular basis must be registered in the city of Woburn for the duration of this special permit. An exception. May occur. That would allow. For. Employees. To leave a personal vehicle.
In place of.
In place of a company vehicle, if a company vehicle is taken home. Overnight.
Gordon, did you get that?
Gordon, I'll give you my notes.
Exception may.
Exception may occur that would allow for employees to leave a personal vehicle.
Vehicle, if a company vehicle is taken.
Overnight, yes, thank you.
That condition number, I I have a different set of conditions than you.
That would be ori- that would be original condition number six.
We were leaving at vans and now we're adding that to six.
Right, that's the five vehicles?
Yep.
The five vehicles is three.
Right, right, but the originals, so the original number two was five vehicles, it's five, still remaining that way. But the language would have to occur under the overnight vehicles, because I'm not gonna force one of your guys to register their vehicle in Woburn if it's overnight.
So we're moving the exception down here.
Correct.
Gotcha. And you're okay, you're okay with the five vans and then we're okay with the eight.
Okay, so, um, do I have a, wh- when we get to condition six, we'll vote on that, but um, condition four, um. References, uh, parking of the vehicles where the fire department said they had to be parked, is there any issue with that?
No. No, that's those back.
Right, exactly, and that that would be when you get to your site plan survey that you do, they'll be on that plan as well, so. Um, do I have a motion to accept condition number four from our original proposed? Um, condition number five, um, that the, my language says that all vans. Must be clearly marked with the company name similar to the picture provided to the city council and attached here. For the duration of the special permit. I know you had some different language, Carrie, Attorney Armstrong. Um, that you said today.
Yep, so the concern there was that. And again, we're, we're looking at every possibility here, is that.
So just, for instance, we have five vans, they're all, most of my vehicles are letted, except I do have two or three vehicles that my employees. That are not letted and they take home because they, that they're part of their job.
Who would be part of the five that would?
No, 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 but I just, you know, in case they take a van home, but that would be the other exception where.
So, so, but the ones that you're gonna park overnight, there's no issue?
No issue them being letted or anything like that.
Okay, and and the other vans are just their own personal vans?
They're not vans, they're, they're like a Chevy Traverse S U V, they're an S U V that they take home every day, they own, they, it's always there. Hey, I just was gonna say, if they park it overnight, but that kind of is exception.
We already hit it with.
Because they, they will park it overnight because the van would be.
Right, yeah. Yep.
Alright, so um, we're on condition five then, all vans must be clearly marked. Do I have a, a vote from the committee? On that language from my original conditions? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, condition number six, we have new language for that. Gordon, do you wanna read it or you want to?
All overnight vehicles must be registered in the city of Woburn for the duration of the special permit. And is that, and then the exception is in that one?
Yes.
Exception may occur that would allow for employees to leave personal vehicles in place of a company vehicle, if a company vehicle is taken home overnight.
Do I have a motion on that?
Make a motion that is true.
All in favor?
Aye.
You, you get a vote too. Well, cause you're, you have to live with it, so if you can't, you need to live with it.
Yeah, you get a vote with the attorney, absolutely. Um, so the next condition on the original proposed is the total number of parking spaces is seventeen, five of which are for overnight parking. Um, parking spaces will be striped and numbered.
Can we do, let's see. Would you up to seventeen? Do we know for sure we're gonna get seventeen?
Yep, that's what we, when we walk.
I just wanna make sure you leave yourself some ru- like up to seventeen, because if that site plan comes back that you can't because they don't work, right?
I think we measured it a couple of times.
Up to.
Up to, yeah, up to a total of seventeen.
Yeah. Do I have a motion on that language that the total number of parking spaces at this location up to seventeen, five of which are for the overnight vehicles? Uh, parking spaces will be striped and numbered, that's condition number seven. Do I have a motion?
So moved, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, condition number eight was that the striping and numbering of parking spaces will be maintained by the petitioner and refreshed as needed. I did change that language, I had some other language before, um, but I assume you're gonna do that anyway, I mean, this is important. Um, and update, and again, I just wanna be very clear to both of you, these are not conditions that. We wouldn't ask anybody else to do, so. Um, and updated certified plot plan must be pro- provided by the petitioner indicating boundaries of the property, location and size of all seventeen parking spaces. Fire lanes, loading docks, no storage, and the primary location of the dumpster, because I know it's gonna be on wheels, so. But it, for, for the most part, I think we talked about where you might put it. It, it, so where you think it's gonna be put most of the time, like at night when you go home, it's gonna be put in that same spot? Um, is that, um, is that agreeable?
Okay, we'll, let's take that seventeen out, just say showing all parking spaces, since we're unclear where that number's gonna land, it's gonna be seventeen. The location and size of all parking spaces, just in case for some reason we end up at sixteen. Um, fire lanes.
I don't.
Do we need fire lanes? We don't have a loading dock. We don't have a loading dock.
You don't have a loading dock?
There's a door there, there's no dock, there's no dock.
Isn't that where you're gonna be unloading your trucks that come with all your equipment?
Well, I guess. Yeah, you call it a loading dock.
Okay, no storage.
So, wait, let's just go back, so number nine, um. Do I have a motion that number nine with the, with seventeen struck? Somebody make that motion. An updated certified plot plan, petitioner, and then we get in the size of all parking spaces.
So moved.
Do a second? Number ten, snow removal, um, let's see, no snow removal permitted onto Dragon Court. A snow removal plan will be provided to the domain inspector, that's pretty standard stuff. Okay with that? Do I have a motion on condition ten? Let's see, I did change the language on here, I said petitioner anticipates up to four tractor trailer deliveries to the site per month, barring any emergency situation. Deliveries cannot be made before seven A M or after six P M, Monday through Friday via tractor trailer. So that it doesn't count Amazon or D H L or any of those other things, um, and we do, and the reason I put barring any exceptions. Because I do know, I mean, in my own husband's business, when they get tractor trailers, sometimes there's equipment missing off. So there could be times where, you know, you guys could get a delivery after hours, I would imagine it's not gonna be often, but. That's why I put barring an emergency situation.
Do we have to qualify that with the number per month?
Nope.
Can we take that part out?
Um, or you mean the tractor trailer delivery? Um, well.
I'm not necessarily sure you can get a tractor trailer in there. That's a tight spot.
Yeah, well, a small one.
I was gonna say, you'd be even hard pressed with a twenty footer, yeah.
Does anybody want to comment about the no tractor trailer deliveries? I, I mean, I, I have some comments about it, but. I'll certainly let the council, um, give your feeling. Yes, Counselor.
I, I, I just, you really need that, I mean, I, I, I'm not necessarily sure you're gonna get a tractor trailer in that, especially if there's vehicles in there. I would think the most you'd have is a box truck coming in, you know, a straight job to, 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 to offload your deliveries of, you know, whatever your materials. You know, I, I just find, the thing is, I don't, I don't want, I think you wanna keep this in mind, that. If you would need a, a straight job delivery, you would specify that on your L T L manifest, and I think that would behoove you, because you don't want. An over the road carrier with a fifty-three footer with a sleeper on it parking out on Dragon Court, because that could cause all kinds of a nightmare, so. I don't know how you get your materials delivered typically, but.
Doing any FedEx, um, freight or, for anything that comes truck trailer, it's usually FedEx freight or Dewey pile.
I would definitely specify with your carrier, I'm very familiar with a Dewey pile, they have straight jobs, they have lift gates, and I would say straight job deliveries only. Um, just because it's, it's, it'd be more convenient for everybody.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so back to the original, um, condition, I know I specified the number of tractor trailer deliveries. Um, again, I, I feel like the language I put in here regarding emergency situations covers it. It's important that there be some sort of expectation on the amount of deliveries, because if you said, Sean, um, you know, we're gonna have. We're gonna have ten tractors, that is definitely changes the scope, you understand, and and would be a concern. Um, but, and and who knows, in a couple of years, you, you, you come back and say to us, you know, I, I don't, I don't even have four now. But I think when we talked in the parking lot, you, you told me two.
Right.
So we came up with four, so I. We don't wanna do traffic studies and all that and stuff, you know? But you, this is.
I'm fine.
And I wanna just remind everyone.
Yeah, that, the only concern in mind is that, like, I order something and deliver it, I have no control. If they don't have a straight truck or something like that, like four.
Or how do we know that it's gonna be four?
Yeah.
I mean, that's once a week right now, but.
So the language that's currently stated in your draft. Would not prohibit any more than four. That is, that's basically an opinion that's in there.
Right.
But it, it doesn't, that's not a restriction, because the restriction in sentence two is when the deliveries can occur, not how many the deliveries that, that can happen.
So I think we don't even need it in there.
I would tend, I would tend to agree with that. I understand Councilor Mercer Bruin where you're getting at.
Yeah.
Uh, on that, but saying petitioner anticipates up to four tractor trailer deliveries to the site per month, the word anticipate. That, that doesn't cover anybody in that sentence. I don't think we could, if there was six tractor trailer deliveries in a month. There's nothing in that condition that says that they would be in violation of the special permit.
Right, what I was trying to do was give some deference to possibilities of there being more, but.
Understood, the barring an emergency situation. That doesn't pertain to the limit of the amount of shipments that's only for the hours. That it can occur, is what I'm trying to say.
And, and I, so then I, I need to take a step back, because I think it's important for the, the neighborhood to have some understanding. Of how many deliveries we're talking about, and I also wanna remind, you know, I know this is a lot of work that we're doing here, but this is exactly what. We're supposed to be doing here for Special Permits Committee, um, and, and it's okay for us to take the time to do it. So I just wanted to make sure everyone really, um, knew that. Um, so, I, I would like to see us have a, 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 a number. Here, um, because if we were talking, and I know. Um, so I I would like to see us have a a a number here, um, because if we were talking, and I know you're not talking about ten, but that does change the the scheme of things. That the the tractor trailer deliveries would be um up to four deliveries uh per month.
No, we're not gonna make it any more restrictive than we'll leave it how it is. We're not gonna put another restriction in it. If we can put it in as an anticipate to give people an idea of a potential scope, that's fine, but I'm not gonna say yes to restricting it at four, I don't know what that.
Nor was I. I was just saying, I wanted everybody to be clear.
To me, having it there doesn't help anything.
Because it's a statement rather than a condition.
Right, like, so primarily the only things that come on.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. If if the goal is to be giving people, because this is gonna end up on record. So people can pull up the property and they can see what it looks like, and so someone's gonna say, how many deliveries are they getting? And I say, you anticipate this many, does that mean that's how many are gonna come?
Yeah.
It's it's kind of a throwaway statement. I tend to want additional language out, but if the alternative is to do an up to where, right, and somehow make that a set number, we're not, we're not gonna do that. So we'll just leave it as is.
Um, well, maybe we're not because now that I've looked at it and you pointed out that it, there is no restriction here. Um, it's important that, you know, we we have some kind of guidelines for the neighborhood or we have to do traffic studies and all that stuff, so. Um, let's let's kick, let's move on to number twelve for now. The receiving docks and all entrances and exit doors to remain unblocked and fully accessible. So any consider, is there any problem with that?
No, not at all.
Do I have a motion that question twelve?
Second.
There'll be no offloading of vans or tractor trailer deliveries to take place on Dragon Court. Do I have a motion to approve number thirteen?
Second.
Uh, the parking lot will be kept clean and clear of all trash and debris. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the dumpster cannot be emptied before seven AM or after six PM. I know, Sean, you said you.
That's fine.
You you have a direct connection to the person that does it.
Madam Bo.
Uh, yes.
Um, just a quick question. Are we not um holding the petitioners to uh enclo- and put any enclosure around their dumpster?
So I'm gonna talk about that briefly. I did bring that up because it is a concern, um, and our municipal code actually, um, for for many instances, you have to do that. When we were down in the parking lot and I suggested that, uh, Sean um clearly thought that was not something he could do because he has um his dumpster on wheels. I alluded, not alluded to, but explained one of the reasons these things need to be locked up is because we have these cowboys that come and empty them at six in the morning and five in the morning and four in the morning. Um, so again, I this just, I tried to work with this petitioner, the folks here, and said, okay, you know, we're not gonna require that they be locked up because it's on wheels. Um, but if there are any problems and those dumpsters are being emptied at five in the morning or six in the morning, um, and I get complaints about it, we'll be right back here to talk about it. And then we'll do what we've done with other companies and require that it be locked up and not on wheels. So I'm I'm trying to give some benefit of the doubt here. Um, but if the council feels strongly that it should be enclosed, then I'll be happy to listen.
Madam Chair, would a compromise be rather than being in a, an enclosure, a firm enclosure, that the dumpster is just locked?
Does the dumpster company unlock it?
What? Is there a lock that's available? Could you put a padlock on it?
I don't know how.
Yeah, it's gonna, thing that flops over and you put a padlock on it.
It's a lock bar.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would, I think that would suffice.
So the dumpster, um, could I have a motion to amend condition number fifteen?
I make a motion to amend uh condition number fifteen to include after six PM that the dumpster shall remain locked.
Second.
I'm tired of those hours.
Overnight.
Yeah, so when you get back into the, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So. I know your guy, you said he won't show up, but it's it's a huge problem. It's a huge problem and all, it echoes like crazy. Okay, so um now we get to special events. Um, I don't know that we need to talk about that because we talked about the hours of operation, but I did want to touch on your grand opening event because you said you'd like to have a grand opening event. Um, and, you know, I think it's not an unreasonable request. Um. Do you have any idea when you want to have it or how you're gonna have it?
I have no clue.
Yeah.
I haven't even thought about it.
Just. So you don't want to. I mean, let's put it this way, if you had a grand opening event and all the parking, you know, you use the parking on your place.
Yep.
Um, and you did it within the hours of operation, you don't need to come to us to ask for it.
Exactly.
So, okay, I thought you were talking about doing something bigger and we would maybe try to work with you on that.
No.
That was, yeah, that was all just part of.
Okay.
A broader, broader discussion we were talking about in the hours, but.
Again, I just wanted to ensure we would try to work with you on that.
I think we can work within the hours.
Okay.
Sure.
So Madam Chair, in that regard, then um move to strike from the.
Do I have a motion?
Seventeen and seventeen. Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so we're back to condition eleven. Um. Tractor trailer, I I I think the tractor trailer deliveries um should be uh approximate, uh, I'd like to see them restricted to four per month. Um, and that's based on, and I'm even willing to talk about five, but that that's based on what you described to me, Sean.
Yep.
Um, and you know, certainly over the years, if things change, I mean, we're not, things aren't gonna change in six months or a year. The council would certainly raise a few eyebrows about that, but um, as things move on, you could certainly address this forward about that. But I think originally you had said two, so four didn't seem to be such a hardship.
Um, I was just scheduling, yeah, scheduling.
Yeah, I was just scheduling.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Like, I just.
Counselor DeMembro.
Sean, wha- wha- what exactly would be coming in on the trailer truck? Like, would it be like eight pallets, ten pallets, twelve, or would it be just?
One, two pallets.
So it could still come in on a straight job?
I, right, you, exactly, as long as they can deliver it, so that's what I'm I'm thinking.
I mean, the trailer truck is almost, if you got a full trailer of twenty pallets, I'd say, there's no way you could house it. That's why I'm saying to myself, why do we keep talking about a trailer truck when facility can't even handle it?
I just don't know how I can control that, that's.
You don't even have a dock plate over.
But then again, I'm I'm sitting here thinking, who's gonna be out there monitoring thirty days, thirty days a month?
And it almost sounds like you get a pallet or maybe two of hardware or wire or whatever you might have, and I don't, then I was just thinking maybe an amplifier or something or a speaker box. But I was like, gee, you could still stick those on one or two pallets.
Usually I I have three companies I deliver. I I get my TV deliveries, usually Dewey pile. I get my wire, I order them bulk once a month, then I get a big two, two pallets, three pallets, and I get my um search protectors because of of the weight. They come, you know, usually by pallet.
Hmm.
One pallet, so. I agree with you there, but I just honestly can't say like exactly as I said before, but, you know.
I think four would be, I don't even think you'd touch four.
Yeah.
At all.
So I'm gonna ask the council to amend the language and say up to four tractor deli- deliveries to the site per month. Barring an emergency situation, deliveries cannot be made before seven AM or after six PM Monday through Friday via tractor trailer. Do I have a motion? For that language? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, um.
Madam Chair, what was the amendment? Number eleven?
Um, up for number eleven, we'll read up to four tractor delay, tractor trailer deliveries to the site per month.
So it's removing petitioner anticipates?
Yeah.
Correct, okay.
Uh, barring any, barring an emergency situation, deliveries uh cannot be made before seven AM or after six PM Monday through Friday via tractor trailer.
That's the language.
And that was the language. Um, and then I just wanted to make sure of the seventeen parking spaces, um, I I am not a a professional when it comes to like the handicap requirements, but the handicap commission might, you know, based on how many spaces you have, you probably will have to have one handicap space. Maybe, I don't, I don't know what the number is, the ratio, uh, but you should keep that in mind. Okay. Um, so on the overall motion to accept the conditions one through, I think we're at sixteen, not because we got rid of, no, it's actually fifteen.
Fifteen.
One through fifteen. Do I have a a motion on those fifteen conditions as amended?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So will amended text be sent out before the fifteen?
Yes, Gordon, Gordon will send send it out.
Make sure that all the neighbors.
The neighbors, yep, yeah. Um, and then for anyone, um, so Tuesday.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Sorry.
We've 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 approved the working draft of conditions. We still need to move the actual petition back.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
If there may be a question about that one handicap thing, or we want to make sure that you see the amended language, maybe it would be appropriate to make a motion to send it. Well, I'll back up.
I don't think, I mean, Tommy Quin moment should.
That's building related.
Okay, so we don't, so I'll take, let, take a motion.
That'll be taken, that'll be taken again.
I didn't hear you said, you won't issue what?
Then the the building commissioner won't authorize the occupancy permit unless you within compliance with handicap.
But he's getting the plan.
Yeah, so that'll be.
Um, so do I have a a main motion?
Motion to send it back to action.
Nope.
Well.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, I make a motion, motion that we send this out out to pass.
Second. With the conditions.
With the conditions.
Fifteen conditions as proposed, so on, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I just wanted to make a comment about Tuesday night's meeting for anyone who's here. Uh, it's a public hearing. Um, so anyone, obviously, as petitioner, you can speak and the neighbor can speak and anyone else, you know. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you next week. Um. We have a couple more things on special permits tonight.
I did not take anything out of your card.
Thank you, Gordon.
No.
I don't know, this is my, yeah, I'm low.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
Deputy clerk to see.
Deputy clerk.
I'm out.
I'm out. Do you want some water? Lou, you want some?
I got. No, I got this.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. That was nice.
Make sure a little snap.
Okay. I have to get this thing to start. Okay. So the next petition on the agenda is Bond Brothers for a special permit under section five point one. Did somebody call him?
I just needed to talk to the proposed condition.
You need a copy?
No, he has one, I just.
Oh, okay, welcome back, President Dillon.
Thank you.
Um, Bond Brothers under section five point one fifty-seven A, five point one fifty-seven B, and section seven point three of the WZO, ZO, to allow for administrative offices and training center, accessory storage of construction equipment and materials, accessory of repair vehicles and equipment, four storage, uh, storage of ten storage containers for tools, storage of six storage containers of pipes and fittings, overnight storage of commercial vehicles, continued use of a non-conforming structure and parking, continued use of non-conforming property for parking of commercial vehicles and equipment at twenty-two North Maple Street A and twenty-two North Maple Street Rear. Attorney Tarby, you have the floor.
Yes, um, thank you for reading that list. Saves me. So, um, with me this evening is Paul James, my chief risk legal officer for Bond, Michael Moore, who's the vice president of field operations, and Tim Williams of of Allen and Major. So, um, we filed the um request for a special permit as read by the chair um for twenty-two uh North Maple Street um in the in the industrial park. Um, at the public hearing, um, the council, the membro had had a number of questions, listened, tried to address all of those um questions that he's raised, and we did address them in the form of a list of proposed conditions, so I don't know whether it made sense to field any additional questions or to go down the list of conditions, which I think addressed a number of things that you brought up at the public hearing.
I think we should go through the conditions.
Um, I was just gonna say, I'll defer to Counselor DeMembro. How would you like to proceed?
I'd like to go through the conditions.
Everyone is, so the conditions, okay. So the um, the first condition uh references the site, site plan of record. Um, there's a um GIS map showing the property um as it sits today. Been used in the past by CN Wood. Um, condition two requires um adequate road and control um prior to the commencement of any site disturbance and maintain throughout the whole site development and layout. Put monthly reports to the border health and Department of Inspection Services. Three requires a snow storage and removal plan. Four, um, requires all dumpsters to be enclosed according to the city regulations. Five, we have a list of the commercial vehicles that will be registered in the city woven and parked overnight on the premises. Then six, I've talked a little bit about this at the public hearing, so. The um, the request for the storage containers is really a little, a little different than what you've seen in the past. This is not a business that's looking for a storage container to store product or specialized equipment. Number one, the request has been reduced to ACE, and as Michael indicated at the public hearing, these are referred to in the construction industry as job site gang boxes. And those are gonna be dedicated for job sites. And they'll house various construction tools, mechanicals, construction-related accessories, stored on site on a temporary basis, and we've um proposed a limit of no more than six months only because there's um, you know, construction season slows down from November to April. Um, these um job site gang boxes would be filled with tools and mechanicals that would go on to a job, and they would stay on that job, used on that job, and then when that job was done, it would come back to twenty-two North Maple, then sent out to another job. So, um, I don't know if you want to stop right here and ask Michael further how that that works. We can, we can answer any questions.
Just just a comment, I know during the public hearing that I raised concerns with the Conex, but knowing that this is gonna be used for that and the security of their equipment and then moved to the sites, I believe it's a much more different use than the previous issues that we had with some of the Conex containers being on site. Uh, so that's no longer a concern that I have relative to the overall use of what they're gonna be doing because it was basically almost similar to shipping in and out.
In my perfect world, they never go to woven, they go from job to job, but.
Totally understand. It's just one of those things where we had previous situations where they were using it for a much different use, and we had concerns about that, and it was, you know, kind of an eyesore and the neighbors, you know, didn't like seeing it, but I think in this particular use where it's equipment that's going to a job site and the security of that equipment, which is, you know, thousands of dollars, um, I think it's, I think it's a more preferable use.
Anybody else before I comment? Um, I I concur with uh Counselor DeMars. Because they're leaving the site, you you're not saying, I need to store this equipment, I'm not gonna, I don't have a room in my building, I'm gonna leave all this equipment. These boxes are literally leaving the site. Um, so I'm okay in this instance, and the only suggestion I would have when we get to that um on the floor is that we make a mo- we, when we're doing our findings, um, that we make a finding that that it's not precedent setting and and use the appropriate language.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that it is not. Uh, so that would be my only comment about it. But I, given your operation, they're leaving, and then they come back and you fill them up, and they they're not sitting on site, so I'm I'm fine with that.
Great, thank you. Um, moving on to condition seven, that indicates that no trucks to and from the site shall travel on Merrimack Street. Um, number eight, signs will be installed at all exits instructing truck drivers to use. instructing truck drivers to use the curb pattern on New Boston Street rather than Merrimack Street. The curb pattern on New Boston Street shall be installed with granite curbing as shown on the site plan. Number 10, all outside storage will be completely enclosed by means of a chain link fence with privacy strips, not fabric, as requested by Counselor DeMembro not listed, and eight feet in height with the exception of entrance and exits. In terms of signage, petitioner simply will replace the existing Woodco sign with a Bond sign. Twelve, another request by Counselor DeMembro that petitioner installs a stone tracking pad at the new gate location at New Boston Street to limit tracking of any materials out of New Boston Street. However, if any modern debris is tracked onto New Boston Street or North Maple, petitioner is responsible to mechanically sweep with a street sweeper any and all debris slurry tracked out onto the New Boston Street and not Maple Street. Thirteen, petitioner shall disconnect and remove, I guess there's a temporary power line and box located at the gate on New Boston Street, except in the event of emergency, standard hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
John, I'm gonna stop you there.
I'm sending.
I'm just gonna stop you there. Does anybody have any questions about the hours of operation? So I just want to make a quick comment. I don't take any exception to the hours of operation, but I will say if this petition was for Draper Street or Nashua Street or Dragon Court, I would take exception if you had to drive down the road and go through a neighborhood to do it at 5:00 a.m. But we're talking about a completely different situation here. So I just wanted to make that clear.
We've worked on any special permits.
Yes, we have, yes.
I know your conditions.
All right.
There'll be no storage of any trucks, cars, machinery outside the fence along the Boston Street or under ever sources high tension rates. Sixteen, no more than four stockpile bays not to exceed 24 feet by 24 feet per aggregate materials. Each bay should not contain more than 50 tons of material per day. And that was a request from Counselor DeMembro, which we agree to comply with. Number 17, again from Counselor DeMembro, no storing of any excess fill or curbing debris tailing. By the way, what's tailings?
Yeah, I don't know.
What is that?
It's stone or asphalt chunks that sometimes that people go through and you're gonna reuse material, you screen it, and the chunks that come off, they'll be considered tailings. So essentially, it's trash debris that can't be reused.
Sounds fancy calling it tailings.
I didn't think.
You ain't gonna see the Tiffany's, I can tell you that.
Or demo from other job sites. Then 18, in the event that any additional structures are proposed to be constructed on the site, they would come before the council after reviewed by the building commissioners, either a minor or major modification. 19, no storing or stockpiling of old used tires, fluids, batteries, pots of any kind. Number 20, no storing of junk equipment, trucks and machinery. 21, all used refuse scrap waste and junk shall be replaced properly and recycled properly in a timely manner. And then the woven fire department and woven police department will be provided access to the site for emergency access only. So on that, Counselor DeMembro, I never had a chance to talk to you before the meeting, but they're not sure that they're gonna, you know, have like knock boxes, but they may very well have state-of-the-art, I guess, electronic means of opening the gates.
keypad gates.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna keep ads on our stuff. They're all electric operators in the gates, so a knock box may not work, but we could potentially put a lock box with a combination that the fire department and police department would have with a fob in there that they could use to access the gate.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counsel, go ahead.
I might also suggest if you use a keypad, maybe designate a code specifically for the fire department and police department. This way, it's specifically used where you guys have your, I'm sure you have your mechanics and you have your employees and machine operators and truck drivers. Each one has their own code, so you know who's exiting and entering, exiting, entering and exiting the property. I would just think that maybe you could do that as well with the police department, with Chief Ruffo, and also with Chief Gannon of the FED.
You could do that, or you could also look at potentially dedicating a gate that just has a chain on it just for emergency access for them as well. But we can look at both options. So I want to make sure, you know, if there was a power outage or a fire.
Well, it's just in case of there's any type of action that might occur on that site after hours that they need to get in there ASAP because I know you guys have a lot of expensive equipment and so on and so forth. I just wanted to.
Condition 23, adequate dark sky compliant lighting shall be installed on the building. 24, all other conditions imposed with the special permit decision April 7, 2011 should remain in full force and effect unless otherwise. Herein. And that was a special permit that was granted to CN Wood for use of their property, adding a, what was it, 5,000 square foot addition to the building. So all conditions in that special permit would remain in full force and effect. And the council's inclined to move on this. Who would ask they also make the finding that the proposed use by the petitioner is consistent with the past use of the site is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood? That picture up there is Woodco's operation when they were, when they were operating. So what's being proposed by Bond? You know, you can do a flyover a year from now when you would know whether was Woodco operating there or Bond operating there. You know, in terms of Bond, as my partner Glenn Wood indicated at the public hearing, this is a company that's over 100 years old, well entrenched in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's a good company that takes pride in what they're doing. And, you know, Michael will be in charge of this facility and, you know, is very confident that he can keep it in the condition that Counselor DeMembro has requested.
Any comments from anybody on the committee?
Just a comment. I want to commend Counselor DeMembro on the work on this, especially with the petitioner agreeing to this because, you know, Counselor DeMembro's Ward has had significant issues with some of the commercial sites up there. That's why some, a lot of this needed to be spelt out. And I do appreciate it because it's gonna allow for businesses successfully operate, but also clean up issues that we had had in the past. So I appreciate that.
No, I was saying that he did spend a lot of time looking at other businesses, visiting the site, you know, and crafting really these conditions, so.
Anybody else?
If I might.
Yep, absolutely.
I have to say, my way of thinking of this, and I know it's kind of a pain in the neck for Bond and possibly you, Mike, but, you know, I've come to understand that when you have, when you run a tight ship like this, you have a property that's this organized and this laid out, as nice, it reflects the company as a whole and the residents, as well as anybody driving by there goes. I like the way they do things. And that was my intent with this, as well as to give all the residents in the area some peace of mind that it's gonna be run tight and it's not gonna be willy-nilly. I appreciate all the work and the time that's been invested and spent. I thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
And from the chair, I just want to say, I know how much time Counselor DeMembro has spent on this. I know that you have made concessions, many of them. And I personally thank you for that and for working with Counselor DeMembro because that's nice to see, the collaborative effort that happens. So nicely done. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the petitioner sent, oh, the petitioner for a special permit is sent out ought to pass with a finding and 24 proposed conditions.
Second?
Second, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And my only comment from the chair is that I strongly suggest when we get to the public hearing that there is, I'm gonna make a motion that we have a finding regarding the boxes that is not precedent-setting. I'll come up with some language and send it to, or maybe perhaps work with Counselor DeMembro on some language that we're not setting precedent here. Just so you know.
Yep.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Next on the agenda, does anybody need a break or are we good? You good?
We're good.
Roll on, okay. The next item, and I think our last item of the night, is Campbell &amp; Main Street for special permit under 5.1.5, section 8.3.3 and section 12.2 of the WZO to allow for six residential dwelling units above the first story in a commercial structure and two parking within the municipal parking lot at 477 Main Street. Attorney Tarby, you have the floor.
Yes, with me is Paul Conley, the principal on Campbell &amp; Main LLC. What I'd like to provide to you all is a package that has a list of proposed conditions as the site plan, as the, well, a presentation that we're gonna make tonight. In addition, we have a letter from the architect that would provide a torn point, and he asked that we submitted this part of the record that the mezzanines meet the building code. So I'm gonna submit, okay, 10 copies here so that Gordon has one of the other.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the paperwork make a part of the permit record.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, during Paul at the public hearing on August 20th, proposal was well received except it was a message to maybe look at a different color scheme for the building. So since that, since the public hearing, Paul has worked with Counselor DeMures on coming up with a new color scheme, understanding what the concerns were from Counselor DeMures. And Paul's gonna take you through the presentation, which is, which is this, this document right here.
That's all right.
This document right here. Paul will take you through and show you the changes.
So starting with the first floor layout, notice we came back with, and I know you guys did like the nine spaces that we had in the first runaround. Code had restricted us to only allow 10% compact. So with that done, we were only able to get the seven spaces on this plan. So we put that in here, but I did leave an amendment at the end of the presentation as well. So if you look at that, it has the original parking plan on the very last page there that we had proposed. And I know a few of you had spoke to some different things you were considering with parking downtown and that that could be looked at. So I guess my thought would be, the reason we proposed that is I thought there was more benefit to the city with nine compact spaces than there would be with four, three compact spaces and four regular spaces. I don't think it's a hardship to me to, and I think it's actually, you know, in the times where people are driving, it's perfectly reasonable to have nine compact spaces, and if it's a benefit to the city. If there was a way to allow me to do that, I'd be happy. That's, I mean, we're, even if we were hit the ground running, we're 18 to 20 months away from lining a parking lot. So I'd be open to getting more spaces in there than if there was an allowance for the compact.
Right now, the zoning only allows 30% compact spaces. And the way Tom Quinn looked at this was that it could only be, you know, 30% of the spaces on-site would be compact. That's why we have, we have moved from nine to three. 30% of nine is 2.7 equals three, so.
So that's where we landed on that. So that aside, as far as the presentation itself, the redesign of the building, I tried to take the hard way you guys said, I didn't want to come back with any half measures. Instead of, you know, making some slight aesthetic changes to the building, completely redesign the aesthetic of the building footprint, and everything you guys saw on the original plan is the same. The facade on all sides and especially the front are completely different. You know, I'm very familiar with the movement. I spent a great deal of time here growing up. And, you know, I tried to walk around a little bit more to especially come to some of the buildings that were noted and, you know, pull from it and work with my team. It was a good deal of work over the last few weeks to try and come back with something I hope the city can be a little more excited about. I love this as much as I love the last one, and I'd be, you know, excited to build it.
Any questions?
Yep.
Maybe you could just describe the change in the building.
So what we did was we completely redesigned. So when we did the dark paneling that was the majority of the building and the last aesthetic, we still tied that in. And I like, I looked, I didn't think it looks very good with brick. And we primarily did a red brick facade building with some stone work. And we brought back some dental work, which is a throwback to some older buildings. Yeah, my idea was to make this not necessarily look like a brand-new building, but a recaptured older building that would, you know, even though this will be all completely new construction, something that was almost, you know, reutilized and something we've done in buildings past where just recaptured them with a different use. So we have some dental work and some stone work tied in with the brick facade, and then we kept some of that, you know, more elaborate black paneling, but in much smaller amounts and tied that into the facade of the commercial space as well. We also added a pier at the corner of Salem and Main and the corner of Campbell &amp; Main. So I don't know if you can tell in the front picture of that building. That, the other picture, it actually, oh, I'm sorry. Actually, no, that's the one. Although the other one without the car in front of it is a little more clear, is you can see in the front two corners of that building, it comes down, the piers come straight down underneath.
Oh, I see.
And there was, you know, there were also some comments made in regard to, now, great, so the front of that building on the first floor was because of the sightline, we had to set it back a certain degree or a certain amount of feet from each corner. And then it, there were a couple of things at play there. One was it, it wasn't the greatest look to have the, you know, pointed first floor with the building above it. It also wasn't all that safe, especially as we redesigned to a much heavier brick facade. So in working with our structural engineer, so I guess it was too faceted, or too fasted where it's structurally significant to have these piers to allow to carry the weight of that cantilevered part of the building as well as a better aesthetic for that front of the building so it doesn't have this like a floating look to it. And that's where those came from. And I will hold that, as you can hopefully see in the two renditions, one from each side that we did, it still allows for the intent of the sightline bylaw. So you can see through that. We'll make those as minimal as possible, really open up seat from Main down to Campbell &amp; Salem and vice versa out to Main. So like I said, I still think the intent of that will be met with having these columns in place. We also gave you guys a rendering from the other side this time around too, so you could see it with, you know, some of the buildings with, you know, a similar size, not just a parking lot, you know, a better idea of the scale of the building. And then from there, you know, it just gets back into the layouts with six units to better units with the loft. There is a, I thought the main concern is for the four-story building on a three-story building. It's the mezzanine, we have something put together from our architect that explains the mezzanine, how that works, and that I've thought, you know, acceptable. And we also designed the windows to have the longer windows to show like a continuity in the floor to not be broken up to potentially look like a four-story building for meals. And then, get to, so the third floor would be the third floor with the mezzanine and then the private access to the roof[1770.51]
that his architectural firm had gone through. Um, and, you know, I appreciate how you kind of piecemealed it from some of the designs that we looked at that I thought was more befitting the characters downtown. Uh, one of my concerns early on was the line of sight. Um, have you, have, have you got confirmation from Tom Quinn that that line of sight would be appropriate?
Yeah, well, the, the, um, the original line of sight is fine now that we've added those two piers because of the weight of the brick. Um, Tom and I are gonna talk about that.
Okay.
When, um, he gets back later this week.
Okay.
He's on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
That's okay. And then, did I notice that there was a pairing down of the commercial square footage?
Um, I think it, then we can say.
Um, square foot on this, this.
So I'm looking, I'm looking here that it says six sixty now for the commercial space?
The commercial space should remain the same, I think, we may have done this, to have that accessible path for the van space. I think all we did in this, but I'm not a hundred percent sure if we did this before the last presentation or in between.
Okay.
Is to allow that space, but all that did was take away from the, um, lobby.
Okay, because.
For the residential.
Yep, so I was only asking that because in, here, in the, um, memo that Greg Room, Assistant City Engineer issued, there was concerns about, um, the square footage and what amount of commercial spaces. I just wanna emphasize that the non-resident spaces that are generated by a business are allowed to use the municipal parking lot and that there isn't a provision in our ordinance that would require us to encumber any fee or anything towards any business with regards to the spec, with regards to the square footage to use the municipal lots for commerce. I just wanted that point to be made very clearly. Um, with regards to, so the total onsite parking spaces are now?
Seven.
Seven. So there would be a need for?
Five.
Five municipal spots and that would be based on our ordinance, that would be a total of twenty-two thousand five hundred.
And just to make a point on that, I'm okay with that, I understand the relief aspect of that and not that, you know, it's a guaranteed parking space or that we get anything for that. And I'm okay, even if I still be, what I, I guess, the shortest version possible, I'm okay to pay the higher amount and still open to revising to the nine compact spaces towards the end of the project if that was something you guys wanted or thought was a better fit for, uh, the downtown area than the seven spaces.
So then with Paul saying, I know there was some discussion about parking, if you were to change the ordinance between now and when he is under construction, hopefully, and allowed for more compact spaces, he's saying he would add nine compact, but not look for any reduction on the twenty-two five.
Uh huh, uh huh. Okay, um, are you gonna be renting or selling the units?
I'm intentions to sell.
Okay. Um, has the water department, um, reviewed, um, the plans in terms of sufficient water for the site? Because we're going from a, we would be going from a gas station to a, an apartment building.
The, um, I don't believe they've, we're about to submit a revised site plan.
Okay.
Um, so I don't think we've got any feedback from that. I know that it did come up originally if they'd wanna do a flow test.
Okay.
Um, they didn't, the assumption was just because of the size of the building, even with the four inch fire line, oh, sorry, six inch fire line.
Uh huh.
Um, there, there wouldn't be a problem, but we would do a flow test, uh, prior to.
Okay, because I know most of my colleagues would agree with me that hearing from all these department heads and getting their sign off on a memo would go a long way in showing us that they're okay with, um, what their purview is gonna be tested as.
Uh huh, gotcha.
Um, let's see, DPW on the sewer service and drainage. So have you spoken with Jay Duran relative to?
Yes, I had a site meeting with him, um, and as well spoke, we can start with Jay and then engineering as well, I know they had concerns.
Yep.
Um, we were able to design a system that allowed all the stormwater to be captured because there will be a zero setback on, so essentially just dealing with the roof drains and where, and capture all our stormwater through an infiltration system, um, under the, um, you know, on our lot. So there'd be nothing spilling out into, uh, the public way, uh, which I think would satisfy, or we'll hope will satisfy his, um, main concern on the stormwater. And then the engineering aspect of that was if there was something, so we designed it to take the majority of the system to be located under the parking area, not the building itself. That way, if that ever didn't even be maintained or, um, you know, worked on over the years or down the road, it would be more accessible. Obviously, it's a lot easier to tear up a parking lot than it is to get under a building.
Uh huh.
Um, so it'd be a, you know, a manageable expense for a small condo association to, you know, dig up a couple of parking spaces and fix a drainage system opposed to like trying to figure out how to get under, back into that building safely.
We're, we're working to get something from Jay before next Tuesday.
Great, okay.
Yep.
All right. And then on the, um, I know there was concern raised on the Salem Street side with cars exiting and entering. Um, if we can look at the possibility where a mitigative proposal would be to do the, you know, do not block the box that would run across, that way, you know, it, it kind of eases the flow of access and egress from that side of the building?
Sure. I mean, I think we open to signage on our property, um, forcing the traffic to go out to the right.
Okay.
Like if they were to come out on Salem Street, right, and just take a right out of there and then, I mean, it's pretty easy to get around town from that way.
Right, right, right.
And I feel like in a rush hour scenario, because you know people tend to try and just do whatever's easiest for them, to try and back out across the lane, block that lane to get out the light that way, so.
Sure.
That might be a reasonable, think of signage on a lot, just for the, and our proposal is only to beat the three cars on that side, any tandem spaces, we're gonna align so they go out onto Campbell Street where there's less, um, less of traffic concern anyway. So even in the nine space scenario, we'd only have three cars max that would have to go out.
On Salem.
And, um, actually I think because of the location of a tele, a pole that's not gonna be moved, I think we're only gonna have two spaces. Um, and then we might have to have three, the three middle tandem spaces.
Go out of Campbell.
On Campbell.
Okay, great.
So, Joe, you looking for a painting of?
Yeah, that do across the roadway, if we get there. Um, I'd like, I'd like to see that done to make sure that, you know, if there's any queuing, it doesn't impact it, because I think that's been a problem over there, especially with the liquor store across the street, when somebody stops on Salem and everybody pulls up.
Yep.
Having that do not block the box right across the street would be beneficial so that that egress, so it takes care of two problems that we could run into due to the developer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I, I intend on adding that most likely as a condition during the time, just to iron that out. Yeah, I'm good for right now, Madam Chair, thank you.
I'm gonna open it up to the committee and then if I have a motion, I can.
I'll make a motion, open it up to, uh, non-voting members.
Sex second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, but from the chair quickly, first of all, I wanna say congratulations to you and to Consulate de Murs, this is amazing. This is, this is amazing compared to what we saw the first time and, and I'd be proud to put my name on this and congratulations, Counselor, and thank you. The, the detail, the brick, this is, this is the game changer for downtown, like the Dunkin' Donuts buildings, like some of the other things that have happened down there. And, and I, I am just so happy to see this, so bravo to both of you. Um, so now I'll open it up. Consulate de Mambrano.
Uh, to piggyback on Chairwoman Bruin's comments, this is beautiful, this is a beautiful building. And this costs a lot of money to do this, these, these upgrades with the mantles, the brick. I mean, it really is, the aesthetics are, are far more appealing than, than the original renderings. Um, my applause there. Um, I do have a concern about that infiltration system. I know you'll be getting vetted pretty thoroughly with Superintendent Duran, um, and that was one of my concerns, where are you going to locate that? Obviously in the garage, it makes the most sense. Um, and I know he's a shtickler for detail, so I would ask this, and I know you've already, this is gonna be an expensive build, I, I, I understand that, but if I could just, my two senses, if you have to put a little bit of extra money in that infiltration system just so you never have to tear it up, now would be the time to go the extra step and buy the little, the superior box as opposed to the economical one, I would definitely recommend that.
Yep, and I, we had our engineer, I appreciate that comment, look at, you know, whether it's, you know, doing it in the concrete or materials that would less likely need, um, any sort of maintenance.
I, I would, I would highly recommend that only because it's, it's always good to get it right the first time. Going back in a second time, it's, it's terrible. It's, it's a massive expense, um, and it, what it would cost today to do it as opposed to ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, I can't even fathom. So I think now would be the time to make that adjustment. Considering you put Cadillac taste and style in this thus far, I'd go the extra mile on the, any of your infrastructure. I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else? Oh, President Dillon.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk at these committee meetings based on, during the regular hearings, I don't have that opportunity. So I do wanna thank Consulate de Murs for all his hard work. Um, he really put his best foot forward and worked with the petitioner. He heard what the public had to say and he put a lot of time and effort into it and that showed, uh, a lot of goodwill and hard work and I appreciate that. Um, I'm glad to hear that you're selling them possibly as condos rather than apartments. I always like to see, especially downtown where we're trying to get that going and so that at nine thirty, ten o'clock when the restaurants close, it doesn't become a ghost town. You'll have activity there, you'll have people who have a real stake in what's there and have home ownership, which always is a good thing in this counselor's opinion. Um, there's maybe only one other guy here who remembers back in the mid seventies and early eighties, maybe Joe as well, everybody remember those days. I dare say you wouldn't walk downtown after eight o'clock or nine o'clock at night, at dark night. So we've come a long way, but we've been stagnant with some good things happening down there for a number of years. And sometimes it takes a little bit of thought and not just fall into the regular pattern of ways. I understand there's a lot of sentiment out there for the dome and I get it. And sometimes you just have to look a little beyond that and take a step forward and do something that's for the good, for the future that we're in now, for the people that are here now, for our children and our grandchildren, something that's gonna take the next step to move, move and center forward. I, I appreciate the design look, the good look, it's better than, in my opinion, than it was previously. I'll be the first to say I've had concerns in the past about parking. Um, my concerns are not as big as they once were with the commitment from Mayor Concanon that he has a parking study going on now for downtown. And I've often said, I don't know if we have a parking problem or a parking management problem. So that makes me feel better. Another step that I, uh, that Mayor Concanon, DPW and, um, John Cashell, the planning director, have worked very hard at and I encourage people to take a look at it, albeit not finished yet, but it's finished enough for people to take a look at. Within a, a two to three minute walk from this particular location, the mayor has worked very hard, uh, improving approximately fifty parking spots, which is a great improvement downtown. Again, I strongly feel that we've gotta have activity there after nine thirty, ten o'clock when the restaurants close. My last point I'll say, when my wife and I built our house on Sheridan Street thirty-three plus years ago, it was, it is twenty-four hundred square feet and it was probably one of the biggest homes in the area at the time in that neighborhood. I will tell you now, it's not the biggest home in the neighborhood anymore. So sometimes it takes a step like this to get things moving and that's what I'm hoping that we see. And I'm not discounting the folks that, you know, hate to see the dome leave, but I, I will say this, been sitting there for far too many years and it's been a blight and it's been going nowhere. We gotta step forward if we're gonna make Lubin Center more productive, more livable in a place where everyone, not only in Lubin, but surrounding communities wanna come and enjoy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Consulate Viola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna thank the petitioner, I mean, this rendering is much more appealing than the first one that you gave us and I know it's gonna cost you a lot more money, especially with the brick, the coping, everything else that's gonna be there. Um, as President Dillon alluded to, there's more parking now in this area thanks to the mayor and the DPW and the planning department. That is gonna allow for up to, I think, fifty spots more.
Spots.
Within two to three minute walk from here. So that appeases me more and gives me a better sense of, uh, better sense of approving this project with using more of the city's parking spaces that we have available, um, especially with the, we have the lot right next door to it as well, so. But I wanna thank, uh, Consulate de Murs for all his hard work on this and look forward to see, uh, what happens on Tuesday night.
Anybody else? Uh, Consulate de Murs?
Just sort of joined her, Madam Chair. Um, so just to give everyone somewhat of a, a reference as to our parking stock, um, so I would venture to say that downtown Lubin has anywhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and forty parking spots, uh, because we did see that original, now, most of those, some of those are not overnight parking, they're limited on Main Street, but when we, we did receive that previous report of the parking downtown, that was the original number. Okay, so we've added that thirty to forty spots on, off of Man's Court. When Auditor Charlie Doherty provided us with the document that let us know how much money we had in the downtown parking fund, we had about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and that was twenty-six spots participating. So out of the grand scheme of things, it's not like half the Lubin downtown parking is being, in our, in our ordinance for the downtown parking fund has been given away, these people. So that, I think there's a misconception out there on that particular thing. So with the parking management plan and the parking management study that we have ongoing, um, I think, I, I think we're gonna be surprised to see how much more we could find in terms of areas where we could have public parking. Maybe it's redesigning the parking down at, uh, Library Park and so forth to make it better fit our municipal needs. So, um, I'm looking forward to that. Um, it's a, this is also, you know, if the, if the, if the petition will go through it, you know, the twenty-two thousand five hundred is a significant add to that fund that we already have. And I mean, my hope is that that looks for even further uses of parking opportunities downtown where we can think outside the box. Definitely with the impending proposal for the common redesign, we're gonna be adding parking. Um, and you know, you never know, if we do some compact spots on Main Street rather than the current ones, we could fit up Adam's Tank in. Um, I, I think we might pick up a few spots on that as well. So, um, I'm looking forward to the continued work. Um, I know there's a few things we wanna flush out just to make sure, will we have the DPW? I'd like to hear back from Building Commissioner Quinn. Um, but I, I think, you know, best foot forward, I think, I think we're doing good on this one, so. And I mean, you know what, I, you know, I was in Lexington today, I was in Belmont last week and, you know, downtowns that are vibrant have shops on the first floor, residents on the second and third floors to make sure that we're giving our businesses the clientele. I mean, and traditionally downtown Lubin, if you look at old pictures of the busy van, there were two and three story buildings in perpetuity and I, I do understand the historical aspects of thing and, you know, I, I spoke with somebody, um, about, about this very issue and they mentioned to me that, you know, you know, we do need to preserve our history in Lubin, but we can't let nostalgia get in the way of progress. I understand that. When I, when I first started driving, I bought gas station at the Dome Gas Station. That was the first time I filled up my car. Okay, but I don't think it's been open since then. And I've had more residents say, what's going on there? What's going on there? It's a blight. And you look at Stonem where the Dairy Dome was, that was a very similar design, I think it was the Beacon Gas, the sister station. They recently raised that structure and put in a beautiful townhouse, uh, development there that looks, looks great and actually more befitting than a lot of the places that are in downtown Stonem. Um, so I think this is a step in the right direction. I hope it spurs more redevelopment in downtown, uh, where we can clean up some And I've had more residents say, what's going on there, what's going on there? It's a blight. And you look at Stonem where the Dairy Dome was, that was a very similar design. I think it was the Beacon Gas, the sister station. They recently raised that structure and put in a beautiful townhouse development there that looks, looks great and actually more befitting than a lot of the places that are in downtown Stonem. So, I think this is a step in the right direction. I hope it spurs more redevelopment in downtown where we can clean up some areas and I look forward to ironing out the details moving forward.
Anybody else in the committee or on, not on the committee? What's the will of the committee?
Due to, Madam Chair, due to the fact that there's some underlying issues, I'll, I'll be comfortable sending this out tonight back for action, just so that.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, and I just received the proposed conditions today, so I want to iron out some.
Second.
We'll send that back for action for the next meeting.
So, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you and thank you. And again, thank you, Counselor DeMares.
Motion, good friend?
Second.
Do you have a second, Congressman? All in favor?
Aye.
And from the chair, thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight. I know it was a long night, special permits, I appreciate all of your hard work.